Is the Zoom ready? Blue. Pardon me?
Okay. Can you, can everyone hear me out there? Okay. Can I get a motion to go into executive or to into a special, what is this, what are we calling this? A special meeting? Okay. Can I get a motion going to a special meeting?
I make a motion.
Special. All in favor? Okay. All right. Thanks, everyone, for coming. I want to kind of set, one, the reason why we're here, obviously, and then to give some expectations around the meeting itself and sort of the process that will follow tonight. So the settlement earlier this year, there was obviously comment around the public notice and the fact that we came out of executive session and there was no recognition by the public of the vote that was taken in public and there was no opportunity essentially for the public to address us as a council with respect to Fisher's Cove and the settlement. So that's, that's the reason that we're here tonight. In terms of the process, we're gonna, there are some prepared questions that the concerned citizens of Rodney and Hornkill and friends have provided. So we're going to go through those. I do want to let you know that the reason that we settled was around the risk to the city from a, from a financial and time standpoint. And there will be potentially some questions that come up tonight that we may not be able to fully answer because there may be still risk associated with this case and with future cases for future councils as well. So I would hope that you would appreciate that and we'll obviously make you aware as those, as those questions come up. So before we get into the prepared questions, I didn't know if there was anything else from the group here that, okay, yeah, just like hearings typically will allow for three minutes for you to ask your questions. And as I said, I'm going to go through the prepared questions. I'm not sure who from the friends of Rodney prepared, but they're an amalgamation, I assume, of, of questions from the group. The other thing I wanted to get across is that I'm very thankful, one, to my counsel that sits here because we did take this on as, as a group and it was a unanimous vote. And the person who's not here is Ted Becker. And this in no way represents the fact that we're doing this because Ted wasn't willing to do this. In fact, I'm certain that Ted would be willing to do the same exact thing that we're doing tonight. So I just wanted to make that, make that statement. And with that, okay, we go ahead? Okay. So the attorneys, for those who aren't familiar, to my far left is Glenn Mandelsohn. He is our city solicitor. To his right is Max Walton. And Max has advised the city on other cases as well as other municipalities on issues having to do with land, particularly around land use. There was also a third attorney. He's not here tonight, but Scott Wilcox was someone else who advised us from our insurance carrier. So these are two of the three who helped us in terms of our settlement. Okay. So I'm going to go through, as I said, the other thing I'd like to mention in addition to the time is we're going to go through some of the prepared questions. So if the questions that you've come with, prepared to ask, are covered in this, in, in these prepared questions, I would ask that you respect that and rely on the answers that we've sort of given. Okay. So the first was, why was the mayor and city council vote on Fisher's Cove not videotaped? And I'll, I'll touch on this one because this really gets to, you know, that first part, which I talked about, was when we went through this negotiation settlement talks in executive session, you come out of executive session and into a public session where you take the vote. And if there's any failure, it's that we should have been maybe more deliberate in signaling that we were indeed that day going to take a public vote and where that was to take place. But when we came into public session, obviously, there was no one in the room. So I think with that, there may have been some confusion. There was no, nothing turned on to record. I don't know if there's anything beyond that. There was no, nothing nefarious in terms of trying to hide anything.
So there were some people on Zoom. So it was streamed via Zoom, but the Zoom was not recorded. And I had thought it was recorded. And then when I went to upload it, it was not there. So that was a technical error.
Okay. And by the way, the next thing I'm going to address is the second question, which is why are there no minutes? And those are in draft format. We will vote on those on the upcoming meeting. They are prepared. So those will be in the next attachment. There was a statement that I was prepared to read when we came out of executive session that day and came into public session. Because as I said, I think, at least I anticipated some might be there because the executive session was labeled as Fisher's Cove. It wasn't perhaps as obvious it would be, but I do want to read what I was prepared to say that day. When I cast my vote to uphold the decision of the planning commission to deny Fisher's Cove preliminary approval, I did so with the understanding that the code allows for discretion and interpretation of that code in voting to approve or deny. I have come to appreciate that the process of defending this decision is a high bar and was difficult to meet. With the prospect of litigation that will be both lengthy and expensive, potentially resulting in losses to the city in tens of millions, that our best option was to accept the settlement that both sides have worked diligently in a good faith towards. This option allows Lewis to utilize the time and money that otherwise had been used towards litigation and apply those efforts towards minimizing some of the aspects of this project that were objectionable. While this may not completely satisfy the objections held, they were a best effort in recognizing that even if the litigation were successful for the city, the developer had the right to develop at some level. And so that sort of addresses the piece around what would have been said in the, the recordable piece of the, of the minutes that day. Does anyone else have statements to make?
You might mention that those minutes, they're older minutes than those ones that are not yet
Yeah, approved. Exactly.
So isn't any intention to hold these up? It's just a matter of time that it takes.
Today, elected and appointed officials have refused to discuss Fisher's Cove residents with Lewis residents and voters. What specific guidance or directive was the city following? At this one, I would, I mean, you got, you all gave the directive, so you wouldn't mind articulating.
Yes. As you're aware, our discussions, your client or attorney-client privilege plus under state law, you can't disclose that what's occurred in executive session without being in violation of the public integrity. I'll try to talk louder. I'm very sorry. Those conversations that lawyers have with their client or attorney-client privilege, the city is our client. And also, under the public integrity statutes, you can't reveal what occurred in executive session without being in violation. So all of those discussions are private and attorney-client privileged. So they cannot be disclosed.
The next question is, we're around, what were the specific substantive matters that the city determined were indefensible in court? And what I would say to that is, at no time were we told these were indefensible. It was that the defense would be long and expensive and no certain outcome, to be sure. If anyone has anything to add to that. There have been rumors about ex parte communications. Was that a factor? We never went to discovery, so to what extent these ex parte communications exist or proof of them do, I do not know. But we were certainly made aware that the risk that if they did exist, it would have certainly made our case more difficult to win. The litigation concerned denial of the application, but the settlement agreement includes provisions which are beyond the framework of the preliminary consent. Final approval of the subdivisions we've done without adherence to code procedure, apparent approval of waivers without adherence to code procedure, and the purchase of a plot for 500K. How and why did these provisions become part of the agreement? What I would say there is it's just part, as you negotiate a settlement and move towards that, these are negotiable items that are part of the settlement.
They're negotiable items, Mayor. And I guess part of it is whenever you're negotiating a settlement, each side wants certain assurances. And one of the assurances that was important to their side is that they would be able to obtain final approval, should they be able to get all of their outside agency approvals, which is something that's happening right now. So that was, that was an assurance that they needed to resolve this litigation and that was just part of the negotiated process. It is, should we have sent them back before the planning commission, we wouldn't have been able to provide that assurance and the settlement might not have happened. So that's the way that those terms got into the agreement.
And to that point, they did indeed, prior to that, receive all of their agency, their required approvals as part of their application.
Up to preliminary approval.
Okay. I think I'm on the right note. The review of the Fisher's Cove application revealed that the city code is not current with respect to environmental and climate concerns. What substantive changes to the code do you support? Well, the thing I would note is that subsequent to the application of Fisher's Cove, we've already put on the books Wetland Buffer, Phil, as well as the recent 170 updates that would have all been quite impactful to this. The Wetlands Buffer speaks to a 50-foot setback. The, the current 170 code that was recently amended calls for a dish, more usable open space. So these would have been substantive, made substantive impacts potentially on this development. The process of realistic time change to implement changes to the code, you know, this one we just went through, I think it took over a year to really go through. So that, that's indicative of a major change to our, to our code of what that, the length of time that might take as a proxy. Will you support a moratorium on future development until those changes are realized? I'd be hesitant to say yes without a framework of what a moratorium means because my understanding is you have to have a proper purpose and it has to be for a defined amount of time. So what would trigger the, the proper purpose and the limited amount of time? We would have to, I guess, see what the
I guess the other comment I make, so a proper purpose, you know, one proper purpose is the development of new code provisions to address a problem that you recognize. Here, we just went through the process of implementing a new subdivision code. So there's, until we implement that code and you, as the legislative official, see if it's working or not working, there's, there's really not a proper purpose right, right now.
And that's not to say the city's not always open to refining its code and seeing where there are gaps or areas to improve, certainly. The, let's see, the, the review of the Fisher's Cove application raised credible concern that the development may cause flooding on neighboring properties on Rodney, Hornkill, and Pilot Town. The settlement agreement does not change the science and the threat remains. Will the city protect and ensure those property owners from future flooding? The, the city does, does not have the obligation here to do that. That is on the, the developer's responsibility is to make the situation no, no worse. So that's
Right. One of the things we do in the city is every, every subdivision that's approved is subject to a development agreement. So that's a, the second document, but part of that development agreement, the developer's required to give some sort of a performance bond or assurances or otherwise that, so there's bonding set aside, sort of an element of the design does not work, you exercise that bond to, to correct the deficiencies. So we have sort of that insurance policy already in place.
Two months have lapsed since the settlement agreement was approved, yet there is still no indication that a construction access other than Rodney has been secured. What is the current state of negotiation on the alternative construction access? What I would say to that is no access has yet been secured. The other thing I would add to that is I would ask that you allow the city's staff and the stakeholders, the University of Delaware, to work towards that. And any offers of assistance from the citizens, please go through the staff to offer that assistance. I think we're, one of the messages we're getting is that there's some too many cooks in the, in the broth, so to speak. So I would just ask that, it's not that we're not looking for potential ways for the citizens to help, but I would just ask that be routed through the, the city staff as they work towards that. Any, anything else to add to that? Okay. The settlement agree, agreement includes a provision for a buffer between Fisher's Cove and Rodney Avenue properties. There are valid concerns that a future integrity of the buffer and the nature of its landscape plan could negatively affect Rodney Avenue properties that abut Fisher's Cove. How will this city support the residents of Rodney in the resolution of these issues? Look, what I, what I would say to that is this, and the reason, other reason I wanted to have this opportunity with you folks is because I think in many ways, this is an opportunity for us as a council and a community to reengage in a dia, a meaningful dialogue. And I would point to this one as something that the city will support you in this, but I think it's something that the developer would also potentially be willing to work with because surely it's in their benefit as well to have a sustainable, attractive, useful buffer. So in whatever way the city can help facilitate that dialogue and compromise, I, I would support, you know, I, I don't know in terms of dictating, but I think their, their interest would be in having a similar, as you said, sustainable and one that's not negatively affecting the entirety of the neighborhood, for sure. Yeah. Okay. There are questions about the city's preparedness to defend itself against litigants. What are the shortcomings of the current bonding and insurance and how will that be improved? Does the Delaware anti-slap legislation need to be strengthened? For, for that one, I'll turn to you all in terms of the anti-slap. I know this is something that's been raised. So Max, can you clarify about that?
On the first part, the city's policy is a $1 million policy and a $5 million umbrella. So that's the current insurance. The anti-slap provisions do not apply to the city and members of council. They only apply to folks who are coming in and challenging a development approval. I'll do, I'll try to do better. It seems like I'm the only one. So the city's insurance is $1 million with a $5 million umbrella policy? Can everyone hear me? Okay. That's for the city itself. Correct. With a $5 million umbrella. Yep. The anti-slap provisions do not apply to city officials or to the city. The city is subject to constitutional violations. The anti-slap provisions prevent a developer suit against folks who are in the public who are challenging their approvals. So it does not apply to the city at all.
Thanks. Yeah. And with respect to the insurance, I mean, potentially there, we could increase our liability, but the rates are substantial.
And I don't know if the insurers would increase it. You know, I know there have been other places where we've asked to increase coverage on certain items and, and we're already at the maximum.
Okay. Well, Marty, there's just two more questions and then we will, we will open it up. Just, yeah, no problem at all. I probably should have kept you abreast. There's just two more from the prepared questions and then we will take, take some questions. What is the city's long-term plan for the lot that's purchased in Fisher's Cove? Will the city be a member of the homeowner association? So the, I can't speak for the long term because I'm, I, I, I'm not sure that I'll always, how long I'll be in this seat. But there's no intention of this council to develop that lot. It was, it was purchased with the intention of providing more permeability to the area and to sort of mitigate some of the density, as I said in my statement. All these things were done to address some of, some of the things that were objectable while we knew that we, we couldn't address all of them. That's an option. It's not, it's not currently zoned as open space, but we I can't speak for 20, 30 years from now. But you
If people are going to speak, if you could come to the microphone, we've got 40-plus people on Zoom. So we need to make sure they can hear.
Let's ask the, and with respect to the homeowner association, yes, lot owners, all lot owners are, would be part of the, the homeowners association. And then the last question. As we have learned during this process, the criteria used by Sussex Conservation District for approving stormwater management system does not take into consideration winds, storm surge, or sea level rise. Exposure in Lewis results mainly from wind and storm surge. Will the city initiate discussions with the state to update the code for SCD? So this was addressed in some form when we went through the 170 code because there is the recognition that we're still relying on SCD as our agency approval for stormwater management. And maybe we could talk a little bit, but indeed, the city of Lewis could have its own regulations. But the, I'm not sure, you know, the length of the process, one, but also the expense of maintaining our own agency approval, essentially.
Right. So I think there are a, a number of challenges. We would, in order to be able to have authority over stormwater in Lewis, we would have to petition the state to become a delegated agency. And with that, we would have to have the, the capacity to do all of the, the stormwater review and inspection throughout the process. And then after development, the post-development inspections that happen on a fairly routine basis. Additionally, right now, the entire state of Delaware is under the state sediment and stormwater regulations. So there is not a precedent within the state to have something more stringent than the state sediment and stormwater regulations. So I think that if we were going to do that, in order for the regulations to be defensible, we would have to bring in experts from elsewhere and it would be at great cost and great length of time to be able to develop something. And then, again, then Lewis would be the only place where it is, is applied. So that creates a challenge for the engineers that do the designs if we're on a, a whole different set of regulations than, than the rest of the state.
Okay. At this point, we, those are the prepared questions. So I'm, we're happy to take follow-ons on those questions or if people have questions that weren't addressed. Okay. You want to go ahead and articulate that one to us and then we'll take that one.
So the question, just so people on Zoom can hear it, is who made the decisions that put the city in financial jeopardy?
Is that a question around the, the fact that we were operating under an existing code or?
I mean,
Essentially, the, the, the financial risk came at the fact that when we upheld the denial, there were three separate lawsuits filed. So the, the reality of the, the expense of defending those and the, again, the uncertainty of the outcome coupled with that, that, I'm not sure if that's addressing Doug's, the root of his question or not.
I don't know that there's a person or a body that you can point to on that. It's a, a factor of the code that was in place at the time and the, the litigation that was filed. I, I don't think that there's any, anything more specific.
Doug, if you have a, if we have an answer, if you can clarify a little more, maybe more specifically, but that's how I'm reading it. Okay. Was that the only one online?
Can you grab the portable mic to read it? There's two back there. One of them isn't working. One is.
Neither one works.
Yeah.
Okay. So Patrick McCoy, 108 Rodney Avenue. If I am correct, both attorneys present here have been involved either since the beginning of the project or within the last year. Was there a process failure here that the commission and council was not given sufficient advice, dotting the i's and crossing t's along the way that prevented the decision to be defensible? I'm not going to put the attorneys on.
Well, that's the thing. I, as I said in the beginning, I, I don't think that we ever said it's well, we will, but they, they never said it was indefensible. They were willing to, to, to continue to defend it. Their advice was to settle.
Come to the mic, please, because it, again, people on Zoom can't hear if you're not at the mic.
I think what I'm hearing is people are saying
I'm sorry. Can you all give your name and your address?
Blaine Bonham, I met. 122 Rodney Avenue.
Thanks, Blaine.
It, how was it that the city and the planning commission came up with the issues that were eventually decided to reject the application? Was the advice they were given by the attorneys or whoever, was that incorrect to put us in an indefensible position?
And I, I think the answer is, we can't divulge any advice that was given, but I, I don't believe that was the case at all.
Look, when you go into a case, when you go into a case and you're, and you're talking to your client, you give the pros and cons of each. Now, we can't go into the specifics and all that went in, but they certainly were the pros and cons worth provided. I think that's fair.
Marty?
Can you pull the mic down, please? Can you hear me? Yeah. Guys, we are frustrated by the fact that Mayor and City Council and Planning made a decision. We knew the lawsuits were coming. I read what was submitted. It must be more. What I read was garbage. It was innuendo and half-truths.
What was?
So whatever they, they submitted, my question, I'm not going to get into whether it was or it wasn't. My question is, all of our question is, how did this happen? Why didn't you just come out and say, the developers have got us over a barrel? We need, the developers have us over a barrel. We need to figure out what to do. We need to figure out how to do it.
Because that's not how you do it, Marty.
Carolyn, I'm talking.
Oh, I understand you.
Okay.
But to make that statement and have you over the barrel, I don't think so.
All right, Carolyn. I'm on the phone. The, we, we have so many questions and all we hear is that we can't divulge. I want to know, who made the decision to go in to executive session, come out months later, no communication with the community, nothing, nothing that's prepared us for this? I want to know who was at the negotiating table? Was there a negotiation? Was it, were the people at the table? We all feel that you came out with the worst deal than you went in with. And we're not getting anything except this is the best we can do is coming in the future, et cetera. We look at it and we see same number of houses. We spent $500,000 of our money for something. We don't, we don't get it. And I don't know how you want to deal with this. I don't know how you want to handle it, but we're not getting it. And until we get down to some basic truth about why, I don't know. Were these, were these lawsuits ever tested at all? Were they ever tested in a court? Were there any depositions? Was there anything that said that the judges were going to accept this or throw it out? Did it ever get there for? And I guess my last thing is, and what do we do now? What do we do now? Do we just fold up every time a developer doesn't like what we do and they say they're going to sue us? And then here we go? So I don't know. So I don't know. But this is, I can just tell you, this is the frustration we feel. So I don't know how to tell you the answer.
I don't hear what she's saying, but we're still bound to.
Do you, you want to respond to that? I mean, I, I can tell you in a sense of, it, it wasn't to me, one thing. It was the accumulation of looking at it from a fiduciary responsibility to our, to all of the citizens of Lewis. And I, I know that's not a sufficient answer to, to, to most.
I just want to add to the factual points. There were no depositions taken. Obviously, there was a review of the law and the facts that we had at the time. But there were, it never went to court and part of that was the cost of going to court.
And I think the other thing that was, you know, we sort of touched on before is we, we can continue to strengthen our code. We have done some to, to some extent. And we have to continue to do that. We have to adjust our code as, as the environment changes. Kim?
Kim Abesian, 312 Pilot Town Road. So I'm not in the Rodney Avenue group of householders. However, my home is exposed to the rising waters as, as everybody else in Lewis. And with all due respect, Ms. Townsend, I heard what you said and I think regarding the stormwater management in Sussex Consortium. And I think given what has taken place, given people's frustrations, I recognize them. I feel them. I participated as much as I could to the process of arguing in front of the planning commission and elsewhere. But we have to look to the future and the future is I am, my home is exposed as your home to the rising waters. The fact that the Sussex Consortium. I, I mean, look at east of Route One, west of Route One, we're two separate countries almost. But if you go up the Delaware Bay, you have all these communities along the water who are subject to the same flooding issues. Why not be proactive? Why not instead of saying, we can't afford it or just having Lewis be a stormwater, whatever it's called, you know, it's a system. We need to say, let's join up with everybody who's exposed to the same hazards. Let us have a strip, if necessary, of how many miles? I don't know when or how high the waters will rise, but they will rise. And let's work together with the other communities that are south of us and north of us along the Delaware River. Rather than say, oh, we can't do it because I think we can. And if we petition the state with the right information, with the, with the experts, it will be costly. But it is costly to the homeowners who are living on Rodney Avenue, who will have to presumably constantly repair and hold back the water as best they can. It will be costly to me when the baseball field floods and it's coming up to my doorway. It will be costly to the entire city. So let's think big. Let's approach the future with the idea that we can do it differently. Instead of just saying, oh, because from what I understand, what is that called?
Sussex Conservation District. But the stormwater sediment and stormwater.
Well, the state is the authority though. The state delegates the authority to different jurisdictions.
But it just seems to me that just to stay with the status quo means that we're just going to be underwater in a few years. Because they're not taking into account the important factors that are going to affect us. And I think that has to be done and that has to be done through an outreach program to the other communities that are north of us and south of us, as I already said. I won't belabor the point anymore, but we've got to do something proactive and just not bemoan what we did wrong or, or what we were forced to do against our will previously. That's it. Thank you.
Charlie, you had sort of addressed this in the 170 about watching what's coming. Do you, do you mind just addressing what you'd mentioned, your comments on this?
And I think I agree that maybe it's, you could, you know.
And by, by the way, you want to introduce?
I'm Charlie O'Donnell from George Miles and Bureau. I'm the city's engineer and the board's engineer. I, I kind of agree with you that you could lobby, lobby maybe is not the right word. Denrec to, you know, start to look at improving their stormwater management guidelines. But, but I will say this, that their guidelines, the work that goes into creating those guidelines, I don't think, I truly believe the city could never afford the amount of work and effort and data analysis that goes into putting those, all those guidelines together.
So it'd be more of an effort like Tim said, where it's collective, maybe with.
Yeah. I mean, I think Kim makes a good idea that, you know, we could say something for sure to Denrec. And what I mentioned at 170 was, is that I know that MDE, Maryland Department of the Environment, which is sort of the same thing in Maryland, is working on updating their guideline, their stormwater regulations in terms of oftentimes these 10-year, 25-year and 100-year storm events that we talk about are based on historical data and they're updating their historical data as in Maryland as, as we speak to update their stormwater management regulations. And I don't know this for sure, but I, I can check on this, that I'm certain that they're doing it for their base flood elevations as well to sort. Because you always have to design against the base flood elevation when you design a stormwater management system, which we all, by now, everybody probably knows what the base flood elevation is in and around Lewis. But, so I know Maryland is working on it and the point I was trying to make at chapter 170 meeting is, is that Delaware often DNRC is in lockstep with MDE and if Maryland's working on it, Delaware is usually, at least in my 35 years of experience, not far behind in doing the same exact thing.
May I ask a question, Charlie?
Sure.
When was the last time that the guidelines were?
2015.
They were updated at that time?
And it, it's probably worth noting that the state, the last time the state updated the sediment and stormwater regulations, they ended up in lengthy litigation and had to roll back some of the changes. So it's, even when the science is there, it's not, I mean, it's not. I'm not saying it's undoable, but it, it's a lengthy process and Denrec is certainly under the eyes of people who are going to push back and have the pocket. So it's not by any stretch a short process. It's a multi-year process. Because they can't hear, they can't hear you on Zoom.
Name and, name and address.
This will be the first time that I come up. Deborah Ewald's Harborview Road. I was just wondering, what is the legislation that dictates, what's the exact code? Like what's procedurally, do we have to do and who do we have to lobby as city Lewis residents and residents east of Route One? I think that's a fantastic idea because, you know, I'd be a lot more worried if I lived in Prime Hook than if I lived here. You know, what is the procedure?
So I, I believe that all of this is in Title VII, Chapter 60. Am I? Okay. I think it's Title VII, Chapter 60, but that, that's going off my memory and.
Okay, of Delaware State Code.
Of Delaware State Code.
Okay.
And that, I mean, that's.
Do you remember what the title of it is?
Well, so the authority for the stormwater regulations would be in there, but then they adopt the state sediment and stormwater regulations through an administrative regulatory process. I can get you the code citation.
Which that's overseen by Denrec.
Yes.
And then they hand down the actual day-to-day duties of the swim.
Exactly.
To the Sussex Conservation.
Right. So everybody's using the same set of rules, but throughout the state, it's a different agency. And in Sussex County, the entire county Sussex Conservation District does it. In Kent County, I believe the, the Kent Conservation District does the entire county. Newcastle County, Newcastle County has the authority as well as the city of Newark, the town of Middletown and Wilmington, I think. And, and possibly Wilmington.
Because just even speaking to people who are involved in building, and now I'm speaking as a private citizen, not a member of the Lewis Planning Commission. I've heard of, you know, developments east of Route One where they're digging swimming pools and they're digging out the, the stormwater management ponds and they're filling up because our groundwater is that close to the surface. And that just speaks to what Pam suggested, that really we need more than this east of Route One. All the communities I'm speaking of are.
It is Title VII, but it's Chapter 51. It's 5101 is.
And I'm referring to communities outside the city of Lewis.
Pardon me?
I said, I'm referring to communities outside the city of Lewis, but close to our borders.
Right.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Deborah.
Marta?
Martin Amick, 128 Nero. I was wondering about once, Chapter 170, and you encouraged us to come up with more ideas for the council to consider. And I wanted to know if you could commit to assigning committees that are well-balanced in the future. It was on the committee and I don't think it was well-balanced enough.
You mean add it like, if we, we do ad hoc committees.
Right.
Okay.
Because it was a waste of my time.
Appreciate that feedback.
And then specifically, how much land is there available here in the city of Lewis to even worry about? Or does it depend on how much we annex? And can the annexation code be changed? Because I don't think the annexation regulations that we came up with, I don't, I know there's a disagreement here that we need to entice people to have their land annexed by giving them more lax regulations. But how does that help the city and the current residents to have more lax regulations than what we have on our own homes? I'm afraid Canary Creek is going to come down, especially with Fisher Cove. It has nowhere to go. Once we have more flooding and we should be considering 500-year flood instead of just the 100-year flood. And it's unbelievable that we have 65% coverage allowed of impervious coverage in this city when the ones adjacent to us are no more than 50%, I think. And I think Brooklyn is 40%. That's all I have to say for now. Just things to think about, please.
Thank you, Marta. Rick? Rick, and then we'll go next on, online.
Thank you. My name is Rick Spitzforb. I live at 122 Rodney Avenue. I wanted to pursue the issue about the buffer zone a little bit more in depth. When we looked at the plan and the schematics in the application for preliminary consent, it was really difficult to understand whether or not the, the footage that was designated as the buffer was an independent, like open space area or whether it was part of the land that was being sold in the individual lots. So to get a clarification, we wrote to you and asked the question. And we asked whether or not the responsibility from the buffer after the developer leaves will be with the HOA or third-party buyers. And the response was the buffer located on individual lots will be owned and maintained by the property owner. That to me is, I'm not quite sure how to express it, but if, if there is no, nothing in the deed that requires the future property owners to maintain the buffer, then the property owners are at liberty to fail to make, to keep it up. They can actually destroy it. And I, I don't know if that was in your thinking at the time that you included the buffer zone in the settlement agreement. But there is no guarantee for the future integrity of the buffer under this arrangement. And that's the point that we wanted to bring to you. Thank you.
May I address that to some degree? One, a couple of things. One, you're absolutely right about it would be on the, the private lots. This is one of the things that in the update or overhaul of the subdivision code was changed so that in the future buffers would need to be on HOA property. But there are other locations in the city where there are buffers in place that are on individual lots. And when a property owner has come in and taken vegetation out of the buffers or cleared the buffers, the city has gone in and required them to replant it. So we, we would address it through a code enforcement process. But, you know, in the future, in future subdivisions, it would have to be on HOA property.
As a member of the homeowners association, you would have advanced knowledge of a home, if a property owner is doing that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
John? John, I think you just identify yourself.
Hi, my name is John Warner. I'm with Burkin Rutecki. The on lot, it is on lot in the buffer area and what we're doing is in the HOA documents, there's going to be covenants that you can't violate that. And we're also happy to put covenants in there that can be enforced by the city of Lewis just to avoid it, to protect that buffer area. It's in our best interest as well as yours to have that. And, you know, Mr. Williams made the comment, or Mayor Williams, I apologize. He called me Andrew. Maybe, made the comment earlier about, you know, the desire to, to work with you on those buffer areas and we absolutely will. And, you know, obviously it's, it's been a contentious process to this point. We, we didn't want that. We've never wanted that. Not to go on any sort of long detailed explanation, that the plan here originally was the 18 lots, which is, is far less than what, you know, zoning allows there. And the plan was always to come in below density to be responsible developers. And you look around the county, it's very rare you see a below-density plan anywhere in the county. And so that's something that, that we did. It was always our intention to be responsible developers and that message wasn't communicated properly by us to you all, wasn't necessarily received by you all. But our hope is going forward that there is an open dialogue and that we have that ability. And the only other thing I would say is, is to not necessarily be too hard on them. And the reason why I say that is, you know, when you have a development that is a buy rights zone development, I can talk a little more freely because I'm not a public body, I'm not anything. And I'm just, I want to just talk real for a second. When you have a buy rights subdivision that's zoned for its use, there is no discretion. It's essentially, think about it, if you wanted to build a house on your lot and you go apply for a building permit and the code says, you've got to have this, 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 and this, and then you get a building permit. If you have this, 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 and this, they have to approve you. And so when, when everything was evaluated from our side, it was, it was, obviously we felt we had a very strong argument. And the overwhelming professional evidence, evidence from the record with the engineers and everything was on our side. And, and, and that's why their hands were somewhat tied because the case law in Delaware is very, very, very friendly for developers with buy rights subdivisions. And then the last thing I'll say about stormwater, and then I'll, I'll leave it be because it's obviously not formed for me. We, early on in the stormwater management process, we had an engineer involved and we got comments, like the very first meeting, we're talking almost four years ago. And it was concerns about flooding. And early on in the process, when that happened, we said, hey, okay, we've got to just get more information to them. The engineer is telling us we comply with the code and we're not going to flood. And in fact, we're going to make the situation better. And so our plan early on was let's get them more information. So we brought in a second engineer. That second engineer ran more calculations and they said the exact same thing. They redesigned some things. There were, you know, a few turns and drafts and responsive comments. And that second engineer said, you're going to make the stormwater better here. And then the city commissioned the flood study, the ACOM flood study that looked at everything, including sea level rise. And the, and the studies for that basically said, hey, the only one scenario, which is 100-year storm and 100-year flood, you're going to have potentially within the margin of error, one-inch increase of rain in one area. And so we looked at that and then the city's engineer looked at it and then ultimately SCD looked at it. And so the, early on the process, we're like, look, we just need to get this, the information and the data in front of them. Because if they see what our engineer is saying, what our two engineers are saying, what SCD is saying, what the city engineer is saying and what ACOM is saying, they're going to trust the science and the data on this. And, and so that was probably, you know, when I hear the stormwater concerns, and I understand that, and I understand sea level rise and the frustration of that. But what I would say is, is to, the engineers here have spoken on this and they. But what I would say is, is to, the engineers here have spoken on this and they truly believe. And what they're telling us, whenever an engineer goes to, says this meets code and it's not going to increase the flood risk, and in fact, it's going to make it better. So I'm just going to leave it at that, and my last comment is again, you know, if you need to get ahold of us to address concerns, my door is open, feel free to contact me, or I feel Justin really feels the same way.
Marty, good. Yep, Marty, if you have a follow-up. Well, I mean.
Yeah, come to the, come to the microphone.
Okay, if you're okay with that, John, I mean.
We'll see what the question is, and then I'll see. Taxation is our whole another thing in Sussex, yeah.
So. John, can you repeat the question before?
Yeah, so the question was, is how do HOAs essentially manage stormwater management systems? And what sort of security or assurances are in place in the event the system fails? So to answer that question, that was actually one big concern of the mayor and city council in negotiating and settling this. HOAs manage stormwater management systems throughout the county and very successfully. I see it in every single one of our communities, the systems are managed, and I see some last, but I challenge you to go into the county and find failing stormwater management systems within approved communities in the county, because SCV monitors them. And there's not, and the few that there are are really the sources of litigation. I can think of Stormwater Creek, I think it's called, as one of them. Ultimately, though, the, some of the concessions that were given as part of the settlements, we are, the HOA is required to hire a professional management company that will maintain it, and they do that. It happens routinely, every single HOA that I'm involved in, of which I'm on many due to my job, hiring a professional management company to maintain the system, as well as there's actually upfront capitalization of the system, five thousand dollars, I believe it is, on every single lot, which realistically, this is not a complicated stormwater management system. I know people, it swales, it's ponds, and it's basins, and it's not a complicated system. And, you know, in getting estimates and quotes, because this was brought up during the approvals process, hey, and there was even a seaside condominium picture that, hey, the HOA can't maintain this, we're going to have some terrible catastrophe. And the reality is, is we got quotes from EnviroTech and other private management companies that maintain these HOA systems throughout the county. And the cost to maintain this on a per lot basis, on an annual basis, is very low. So like I said, HOAs manage it, and the city also is going to be getting annual reports from SCV. They have a right to inspect, and there'll be a private management company that is tasked with maintaining that and reporting it.
Barbara. Actually, Barbara, before you come up, there was one online, I'm sorry, I skipped, sorry about that.
Okay, oh wow, this microphone actually works. Okay, first one is by Joellen Jordan, one-two-three Rodney Avenue. Can anyone on city council cite the language regarding the ordinance is for ordering cul-de-sacs?
I mean, that has to do with the length of the.
There's a.
I can't off the top of.
And we don't want.
I don't.
Yeah, not recited, sorry.
Oh, we can, we can get that. Janelle's listening at home, and I'm sure she'll send me a text with it momentarily.
Okay.
Is there another one?
Yeah, there's two more. From Doug Spellman, for clarification on my previous question, why did you fail to receive the legal guidance to keep you out of this situation? Is it a failure of a legal counsel who was a party to the city council's decision? Is this the only liability coverage that was in the, in play the cities? How about a legal counsel's coverage for permitting errors to be made?
So I think, I think litigation is far more complicated than the question acknowledges, and, I mean, again, we can't reveal any advice that was shared with either the planning commission or city council during executive sessions. But ultimately, the bodies made the decisions they made, and it, and we ended up in litigation and unsettled. But I don't, again, I think that it's over simplistic to indicate that it is the fault of any individual participant in the process.
I'm not sure whether the coverage was, these are the coverage besides, you know, that's like an engineer or an insurance follow-up question, but I think we already touched on that, we have a million and a five-million umbrella.
And then Janelle did respond, and the subdivision code, as it relates to cul-de-sacs. Now, again, this was preempted by what was approved last week. But what's online now and what was in place at the time is Chapter 170, Section 27H.
And is that the current section as well, or that's the previous?
No, it's the previous section.
Barbara?
Thank you, I'm Barbara Curtis from Ship Carpenter Square. And glad to be out of the spot of sunlight, it was getting pretty hot there, so I'll try and put you guys in the hot seat instead. I have two questions and two comments. First question is, there was some, I'm not involved in this whole Fisher's Cove thing, so I'm coming here with some ignorance. I heard something about UD and an access agreement. Is it possible, if there's no agreement for access, that the development can't go forward?
No, if they don't get the construction easement, there's, the will indeed be able to come down through some other access, including Rodney.
Darn. Second question. How much developable land is there left within the city? It would be really nice to have an inventory, so we could watch for people trying to buy up a bunch of lots to put together a subdivision kind of thing. What does the city own, what's privately owned? It would be, in terms of transparency, that would be a really nice thing to have.
You could probably do it in inventory, but I don't know if you know.
In terms of large, developable pieces of land, there are very few left in the city. And we are, I mean, so the one, the two that come to mind, three come to mind. One is the Dairy, which has submitted a subdivision application, so they're pending before the planning commission. The other one is the Ice House, which has previously come in for rezoning requests and denied. But at some point, I'm sure that'll come back before you in some way, shape, or form. And then the other one is the remainder of Showfield, which is expected to come in as Henlopen Bluffs in an application in the near future. Well, and then, of course, there's the Fourth Street, the land on Fourth Street. The Army Reserve Center is, obviously, if that were to, when they do vacate, there's a pecking order process on, but on who would, you know, have dibs on it. But it would most likely go first to a governmental-type agency or nonprofit. It would not go to a for-profit developer. Right, well, right, so the piece across from the Dairy Queen, which we actually have a hearing on next week, and the Two Dips piece that have both come in and have site plans that have preliminary approval.
I mean, the other one to be, we have to be realistic about, we did recently annex in Donovan Smith. They are annexed in as an R2 zone. We don't have immediate visibility on what that might be in the future, but it is in an R2 zone. And it's what, how many acres is that?
I knew that. I think it's twenty-something, low twenties.
Emery just mentioned on June 6th, there's going to be a public hearing on 203 Savannah Road, and that is the property right across from the Dairy Queen. They currently are, have preliminary approval for twelve units there. However, that, that public hearing is going to be about the pros and cons of the city of Lewis actually acquiring that property. So I would encourage all of you to attend. You know, what will be discussed is, you know, what will the city do with it? Why are we, why are we considering buying it? We will disclose, you know, the prices that have been negotiated and the other terms. So it's June 6th is when we'll have that public hearing.
Thanks, Cleo.
On that same property that, can you hear me? On that same property that Cleo was talking about, it's important to recognize that it is something that the city is looking at in terms of purchasing, but the main thing is to stop building. It would be, if we weren't to purchase it, it would probably be built on, so go to that public hearing.
My comments, first of all, we could use, as a community, we could use some direction on how to get Denrec up to speed. You know, I listened to Charlie about flooding and stormwater management and sea level rise, and we start with these horrible assumptions. And it creates the problem that we have now. One of the horrible assumptions is that the past predicts the future. Why can't models be used instead of historical hundred-year floods, hundred-year storms? You know, we know that hundred-year storms are occurring a lot more frequently than every hundred years. And that's a fact that we've all acknowledged. And the second area where I think it's crazy is everyone is using that middle graph of sea level rise, when all the scientists are saying it's accelerating, and why aren't we using the top graph? So those are my questions, and any help that the city could give the residents on how to get this message across to Denrec would be helpful. My other comment has to do with the lawsuit. And I was really disappointed that it wasn't pursued. You know, the city had enough money to buy one of the lots. That five hundred thousand dollars would have been a nice war chest to start litigation. And I think it's a disappointment that, you know, instead you're kind of buying your way out of the problem. It's, the city wasn't reluctant to sue, to be in that suit with the BPW. And I can't see that that brought anyone in the city anything positive. So that was money wasted. I do not think that a lawsuit against this development would have been wasted, even if we were lost, even if we lost it. We would have more clarity on what can and can't be allowed in the future. Those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you just give your name and address?
I'm happy to do that. My name's Karen Smith, I live at two-two-two Marina Drive. And my comment, if I can just try to maybe help you all, some of the frustration is that we perceive city solicitors and the city lawyer as advising us along the way. And what I, what we're failing here is, did that happen, did that not happen? And so maybe, if it's possible, the city, the city lawyers can advise us what we need to do to make our codes and our wishes known, so that we can fight these lawsuits. So that's our frustration. What do we need to do to fight these lawsuits that will keep on coming? And if we can do nothing, then it appears to us that there's a failure of legal representation for the city. So that's my comment and my suggestion.
I'd be happy to answer it, or at least talk to it. Certainly, all the way throughout this particular process, and I will tell you that I've written many, many memos, I can't tell you what's in it. There was discussions with the pros and cons of each one's of council's actions, and I can say that to you with certainty. And there was actually, not one, not two, but three different firms who opined on those subjects for the city lawyers. Do we give recommendations when we see holes in the code? The answer is certainly yes, and we try to point those out and give them and put them into the process. No code is perfect, obviously, and we're never going to make it perfect. But when we see holes or problems, as we did here, then we try to point those out to our client. I don't think I can say much more, and it's a little bit frustrating to be in this seat, but I hope I got the, I hope I got the sentiment across.
I appreciate that, so I'm going to turn to the council and say, please listen to your legal advice.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
So my other question, and maybe I'm stepping into what I don't know, but I think that's our frustration. So moving forward, if I recall, there were some letters to take us out, I know I wrote one, and I appreciate that I got some responses. But the letter that was submitted by the mayor and city council said that we are hopeful that there will be other benefits, I'm assuming that's to the city, that will soon be secured, and that we hope to be able to share those with you at an appropriate time. So is this the appropriate time to tell us what we're benefiting from here?
I frankly thought that that was the easement. And the, when people started talking to me about this easement, it was news to me how they came to find out about it, because that wasn't part of our original.
Right, we had not shared it publicly, so.
And we couldn't, it's, we were negotiating. And our problem was that too many people got involved, so then it was a frustration with the people we were trying to negotiate with and what we wanted to do.
So the easement would be for purposes of construction access, rather than accessing the property down Rodney Avenue for purposes of construction, there'd be an easement that would allow for an alternative construction access. It's paragraph seven of the settlement agreement. I think that's probably some of what was.
That was what, that was what was in mind when that was drafted.
Okay, so that's a very small benefit that is a big benefit. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Karen. Calvin?
Two questions, one.
It's not very sensitive, you gotta poke right into it.
Sorry. Two questions. First is, the only reason why, as the city, can't we privilege here and speak more freely? Since the privilege is with the city. And the second one is, given the wetlands expansion and the new 170, had that been in place with Fisher Cove, how would it change the outcome?
There are a couple of lots situated on there that would fall within that fifty-foot wetland buffer. With the, there were.
Right, and with the new 170, it increases to twenty percent open space and limits your ability to use the stormwater management as part of that. So under the new code, there would be changes, but I mean, those changes weren't even being drafted at the time that they submitted, so they can't be held to something that wasn't even envisioned at the time.
And the other thing to consider.
Right, right, so, yeah, so there are things that would definitely make sure that the next one is held to a higher standard.
As Mr. Horner spoke to, there is always the density, you know, if you've, if someone comes with a plan, it's still. As Mr. Horner spoke to, there is always the density, you know, if you've, if someone comes with a plan that still, I mean, they're, they're clever. You know, they figure out what's, where are the gaps in your, in your code? And there's a dense, is there, is there more density I can get, you know, so.
Come back up. We, we just got something in the chat asking to make sure people are talking into the mics.
Sorry, again, I'd like to ask the first question as well.
Sure. I, I think though, on that piece, we would all have to vote to waive privilege and we were advised not to. I mean.
Well, just for, to clarify that a bit, if the council were to waive privilege, that doesn't mean they would only waive privilege as to the specific questions that you asked them. It means they waive privilege as to every conversation we had through this entire process. And that not only would you all be available, have access to that information in those conversations. So would the developers who are present tonight, who their, their plan isn't finally approved yet and litigation could still happen at some point. So the, the worst position we could be in is against a litigant who we've waived privilege and everything's on the table.
That's what I addressed in the beginning. We, unfortunate, I know people will leave here in some ways disappointed. Because we aren't able to be fully transparent at this point. And that's why I wanted to give this opportunity to be addressed in public, but the reality is we, we, we operate in a paradigm.
Okay. And again, just to clarify, how would Fisher's code change if in fact it were to change at all?
So it would, in terms of one seventy, well, first the wetland buffer so that there would be, I think, a larger buffer from the wetland. But then the, in terms of one seventy, they would be required to have twenty percent open space and that would not be able to include the stormwater management. So there would effectively be more open space. You could end up with the same number of lots by reducing the lot size. But it, it would have more community open space.
Zero, let's go online here.
Okay, okay. It's working again. Okay, so Madeline Lewis from five eight eight Pilot Town Road. Exactly who or what entity has City of Lewis contacted about possible alternative access points? Might be used by the developers of Fisher Cove? Or is the city depending on private individuals to figure out an alternate entry?
We, I don't think we can really discuss that at this point.
Next is by Joel, Joel and Jordan. Again, all due respect, can you please cite the language for me regarding the length of cul-de-sacs in our city?
I think this has to do with the fact that our code, the, the length of a dead end street.
So, and, and I shared the citation, but I don't, again, I don't have the language. I don't have the code. I think it's, it's two hundred or two hundred fifty feet, but it can be waived. The two hundred?
Yeah, two hundred.
Okay, so it's two hundred feet, but, but it can, it can be waived to allow longer cul-de-sacs.
And then thirdly, Madeline Lewis, five eight eight Pilot Town Road. The agreement between the developer and the city states that Rodney Avenue will not be modified. What exactly does this mean? No widening, no swales? What if anything substantial?
That was the, the point, right? So yeah, essentially remain untouched. I think the original plan called for these things. Widening, swales, improvements, et cetera. Our understanding is that it was important to that neighborhood to maintain what they've got. So that was part of the approach we took. Barbie.
Barbie Kiker, six oh eight Pilot Town Road. I have a couple of comments and sort of questions to help everybody understand. And I think part of the problem we had with the, the answer that we get that the cost of litigation was, you know, that was the concern and that was the reason. Is because when you think about managed retreat and a lot of cities in New Jersey and Norfolk and Mississippi. The cities are having to buy land because they can't support the infrastructure anymore. So for me, when you think about the cost of litigation versus managed retreat, that's, that's an issue. And then the whole thing, when you have attorneys advising you, you're going to have a legal perspective. But what about the confidence of the community and supporting the community and sticking with the decisions? I mean, that's a factor. The other thing about the Sussex Conservation District. I think what the concerned citizens question was, will Lewis take the lead on trying to get those regulations changed? And working with him, what her suggestion was, working with all of the communities along. Because the Sussex Conservation District does not take into consideration wind or storm surge. And Mr. Horner mentioned the ACOM flood study. The ACOM flood study does not take into consideration wind. And our exposure in Lewis is wind and storm surge. So those, those are the issues and that's where we're coming from. And so that's why. You know, that's why we're frustrated with some of the answers we're getting. And, and can we take the lead? I think you'd have a lot of citizens working, you know, to get Denrick to change the code for Sussex Conservation, all, all of the, those agencies, just Sussex included.
Pardon. Thank you.
I'm Mary Ann Murray, two 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 Gil's Neck Road. I saw you on your bike this morning. Without a helmet.
I know, I was in a hurry. I was in a hurry. I think one of my kids put the helmet in the shed and I, yeah.
I've supported the friends of Rodney Hornkill throughout this process and have attended many meetings. I think in the end, the decision by the planning commission and Mayor and City Council was that it wasn't a good cultural fit. And I heard that over and over again. And there's no codification for a cultural fit. And we need to do that. We, as a community, we really need to define the bar for development and we need a tree ordinance of the very least that protects some of the stormwater runoff protection. But I, I just think we need to figure out a way to put in our code, and I don't know anything about the new code. What is our culture? What are our values? And when are they? When is a developer over the top in not meeting those values?
My name is Janet Price and I live at thirty Hornkill Avenue. I'm so out of my element, but anyways. I just have an observation and maybe the developers can answer, answer this. But we recently had a three day nor'easter come in. And our house is at the very end of Hornkill Avenue and we had waterfront property. Because of the Great Marsh, there was no houses there yet. I, there was neighbors on Hornkill that their yards flooded. This is what Rodney and Hornkill are worried about. And nothing's even there yet.
So, you know, again, the engineers have engineered for that scenario. And as far as where the water goes right now, the water on the Fisher's Cove property currently makes its way to the Great Marsh anyways. And so there's zero net fill in the flood plain. So what that means, the flood storage capacity that is on the property now will remain the exact same. And as, and in fact, that's just in the flood plain. So the areas that are being covered by impervious surface more than that area is being allotted for storage of the water that's taken up there through the stormwater retention basements and the management system. So it's all, all that calculation goes into it and they run hydroflood models and everything like that, which is taking into account all this. So just the idea that, hey, I mean, this water is going to the Great Marsh right now and we're creating more impervious surface. And ironically, the, the impervious surface is a big buzzword in Lewis, but impervious surface is really important when the soil has good absorption, right? If soil doesn't have good absorption, impervious surface, it doesn't matter as much, right? It's all about where it's going to flow to sheet flow retention and then ultimately getting it out into a tidal body. We don't have absorption. That's why you have a Fisher's Cove. So ironically, impervious surface is not as important in Fisher's Cove because of the soils there. So all of the, it's, it's all about retention. And so all of the space that's going to be taken up of the lots and the stormwater of that, it's all going to be retained onsite in the stormwater management system. And again, all the engineers looking at it and designing and everything say it's going to be better than it was prior to with engineer.
So there's the Great Marsh coming into Fisher's Cove. It's not the rain. We had flood. We didn't have rain. We had the Great Marsh coming into that code. That's why it's all done. And if it was in the, in the backyards of you're talking about retention walls. One less place for it to go. Where is it going to go? Until we dam the inlet of Park Lane, it's just going to come in and then it's slowly coming higher. There's slowly out until that wind finally turns around.
Tom Netto, one twenty-five South Washington. I'm going to try to stay good. I want to take this opportunity to make a plug. There's going to be an upcoming meeting. I don't know if the date's been set yet, Mary, Emery, for the Lewis Executive Committee Recommendations to Mayor and City Council.
So they were discussed at the workshop meeting and the begin, no, the beginning of May.
Right. I think it's supposed to be a public workshop set for specifically.
We have not, we have not scheduled that yet.
All right. There was an executive committee of resiliency which replaced the old sea level wise committee. And I encourage everyone and get every word out to attend that meeting. It is exactly what is the concern with Fisher Cove and ongoing for the entire city. As Mr. O'Donnell had mentioned, storm intensities are getting worse and it's not just sea level wise. Climate change is causing changes in precipitation. We have had ten one hundred year rainfalls in the last ten, ten years, or excuse me, four ten, four one hundred year rainfalls in the last ten years. Those are not taken into account in any of these designs. So we are at risk because climate change is moving ahead. And the codes, whether it's the city codes or the state codes or even FEMA are not keeping abreast with it. So I heard you mention Forster treat, all these other things. These are extremely important topics that the city council is going to need the support of the public on because this is also not just the Lewis Beach issue. This is the Back Bays, it's Canary Cove, the Ebenezer Branch. It's the entire area of Lewis basically. So that's my plug. Please get out the word when the meeting is announced and make your feelings known on what you want to see Lewis do to, to make sure that we become a resilient community for the future. Along those lines, now I'm going to speak as BPW. We have formed a mitigation team and to address the concerns over our infrastructure, stormwater, electric, water, sewer. And that team will, has just been initiated. So we are going to get in front of this because we have a lot of assets that are at risk. And then the, the third one is a comment that is Mr. Mandel's, you had mentioned about a bond being in place as an insurance policy for the operation of the stormwater management system. But that bond duration is typically till the end of construction plus a year. And so the long-term aspects of the stormwater management system is going to wind up in the HOA's hands and the Gabian wall that's going to be built to separate it from the, the marsh. All of that upkeep, or if those walls get overtopped, is going to be the HOA is not going to wind up being able to have the assets to handle that. And it is going to wind up being the city taxpayers who are going to wind up having bail it out. That's my opinion. I mean, I know the city is not liable. But when an area of the city is, is devastated, that's the truth. And for that matter, BPW is going to have to go in there and restore our services. So thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you for conducting this meeting. My name is Bob Stern. My wife, Shazma, and I are fortunate enough to own a house at six hundred Pilot Town Road. Which is at the corner of Pilot Town and Rodney. How's that? So I had two questions, if you don't mind. They're both based primarily on some things that were said today. I'd like to ask questions that are forward looking from my perspective. What's happened has happened and we just need to deal with that. And it happened for whatever reasons it happened. The first question does have to do with stormwater management. And I believe the gentleman who preceded me may have provided some information that relates to the question I wanted to ask. But I want to make sure I have a full understanding about it. And we have heard, and I certainly respect what Mr. Horner said about their view that the stormwater management system is going to work. In fact, the settlement agreement appears to require them to basically say that, that the stormwater, well, it requires them to insert in their major plan the following language, "The stormwater management system for this project has been designed so as not to create adverse drainage and/or flooding conditions on surrounding residential properties consistent with applicable codes and regulations." And I guess my question is, what happens if that turns out not to be true? What happened? Let me just ask. So what happens if the stormwater management system doesn't work? It does create adverse drainage and/or flooding concerns on the surrounding properties? And who's responsible for cleaning up the mess? For compensating owners of the surrounding properties, for fixing a faulty system? I've heard some discussion of bonds and performance bonds. And then I think Mr. Mandalas made reference during the prior gentleman's comments about maybe that bond was like until the end of construction plus a year. I honestly don't know much about such bonding, but in the event that it fails. Where do we as property owners there turn? Are we all just stopped dealing with it on our own? There's no long-term bond to, to take care of this because it didn't work? How do we deal with that? That's my first question.
I don't know where the liability lies. I mean, we, we indicate it's not with, with the city, the the obligations, as you said, to inspect and to put reports, but catastrophic events? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you're right that beyond the, the bonding or some form of performance guarantee that lasts a year beyond construction acceptance, I guess. That's, that's the assurances that we have as a city is for that one year period. Charlie, we ever do longer than a year? I mean, that's the standard performance.
Right. Right. So we would, we would exercise the bond, get whatever monies are available and, you know, engage engineers to rectify problems as best we could.
And that, would that bond go to performance of the system as opposed to compensating homeowners whose properties were damaged?
Performance of the system. Yeah.
Okay. Not the answer I was hoping for, but at least I have an answer. Thank you. And my second question does have to do with alternative construction access. And I, I don't want to delve into your privileged discussions or confidential information that you were hoping wouldn't get out and that apparently did. And what I heard, I think, Mr. Mayor, you say, and I'm probably going to butcher my summary of it because it was a little while ago. But it was something along the lines of, you know, you're working with the university and please don't sort of interfere with our efforts to come up with a, a reasonable solution. Those are my words, not yours. But I, I am wondering what, if anything, are we doing to press the developer to be part of this solution on alternative construction access? Because the settlement agreement does put, in its words, what appears to me to be the primary responsibility on them. It says in paragraph seven, Burke and Reteki shall use any and all reasonable efforts to obtain. It says in paragraph seven, Burke and Reteki shall use any and all reasonable efforts to obtain an alternative construction access point from College Drive onto the property. Alternative access point. For the purposes of all construction of site work improvements for the project, the parties understand that obtaining an alternative access point is of the utmost importance to the city and certainly to those of us who have houses on Rodney. The efforts undertaken by Burke and Reteki should reflect that understanding. So my question is basically, what if anything is the city doing as a party to this settlement agreement to ensure that Burke and Reteki is using any and all reasonable efforts to obtain alternative construction access?
Again, in terms of how that's defined.
Take it. I think it's in everybody's interest, if we can functionally do it, to have an alternate entrance. I think that's to developers, to the citizens, everything else. I have had personally limited contact because I haven't been on the front lines of that. But I know that there's been assistance provided by the developer in trying to get that taken care of. So I will say I can say that beyond that, we haven't gotten to a point where I had to assess the exact language where we are. Because we have gotten to that, because everybody's rowing with that same.
And I'm not necessarily asking you to do that. I just want to make sure that as part of this process, we have in mind that the developer has a responsibility.
I'm sorry. I, I said, all I want to make sure of is given a language of the settlement agreement itself is that we're taking reasonable steps to make sure that the developer is doing everything it can as well. I have no reason to believe it's not. I just want to make sure that they are. Because the only thing I heard at today's meeting was the fact that the city was working with the university. So thank you for your, your responses. Thank you, Bob.
Appreciate it, Bob. Barbara, you can come up. But let's, let's actually, Dave hasn't had an opportunity yet. So before we give people a second go, we'll have Dave.
Good evening. My name is David Ennis and I live at 50 Harborview Road in Lewis, which is two blocks away from Rodney. But I have been here since 201995 in that vicinity. So I've been watching some things transaction in my lifetime down here. The only property that I'm aware of that ever had a basement floor rise and buckle a steel girders was on Rodney. It wasn't from water running over the ground. It was from groundwater. I would add to your conversations and your concerns that what you need to protect isn't just the water coming from the Great Marsh over things. But you need to also think about the consequences of the groundwater, where it is now and where it might be because of additional impervious surface. That's my first point. The second point is, I watched as the state of Delaware built the extension of Park Drive to get the boat ramps out on the other side of the bridge down by Roosevelt Inlet. The consequences of that extension was that there is a causeway that goes next to the Great Marsh and goes to the lagoon or the code that this gentleman referred to, I believe. And the consequences of those pipes is that when you have a storm, the water runs right through those pipes into the lagoon. In northern Delaware, I'm familiar with the Delaware River where they had check valves on big pipes that could keep the prevention of the Delaware River from running back into a stream because it would cause flooding in neighboring properties. It seems to me that we have a mechanical aspect with those three pipes that is not in the best interest. If we were in Holland, I don't think they would have built that in a dyke. This is my, my own personal observation. My final observation goes back to the comment I made the other night at a public meeting. And that had to do with, there was a letter submitted by the former director of the Division of Historic and Cultural Affairs that Fisher's Cove had significant archaeological presence. It wasn't a question. It was identified, I believe, in the letter, and I tried to provide that to all of you. I believe it was identified as significant and that further investigation should be considered. I would go back in, in your conversation and further negotiations. If you don't think about that, I think we're losing target with Lewis's history. And I just want to make that observation as well. I do have a question for the attorneys, if I may. Is there a portion of the state law that now protects the municipalities and the counties from what liability? Is there anything in the code that protects them from liability if they are sued? If they have followed their comp plan, which is required by the state?
Well, I'm sorry. I don't understand the question. So.
I believe earlier Anne Marie was referring to the fact where the sequence of power flows. The state has mandated, in order to avoid spending money unnecessarily in undeveloped areas, they have created a plus system. And the, and the comp plans are a tool that the state has required every municipality and all the counties to come up with. The comp plan, I thought, should have provided an umbrella of some legal protection. I'm just asking. I don't know. Is there any section of the law that does shelter the?
I don't know that there's any section of the law that specifically addresses what you say. But there is the Municipal Tort Claims Act, which protects the municipalities against all kinds of tort claims. And if that was a tort claim, it would be in there. That does not cover constitutional claims. If there's a constitutional claim, there's, that's under federal law and there's other things. But I, if I understand your question correctly, there is no specific law that I know of that addresses that.
Okay. I would just like to say to the members of council, and we're going to be visiting on this top, one of these topics in the resident. The state of Delaware has a legislature that meets from January to June 30th. We're coming up to June 30th. There's not a lot of wiggle room. But I would also say that if you were not covered by any portion of the state law, it would be worth looking into between now and June 30th to see if there's any window of opportunity. Today, we have a Speaker of the House who lives just on the other side of the road. And we have a Senator who has been in office for a number of years. I believe that we could come up with something that would offer legal protection for municipalities. I have to believe other cities would welcome that same kind of protection. And I just feel at this point in time, we don't have a lot of wiggle room for this year. But I just think it would be something worth looking into. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Okay. Okay. Barbara, why don't you go ahead and then, then, then?
Oh, can I say something as she's coming up? In Zoom, we do not read anonymous questions or comments. So I know we've gotten a couple in there. They will not be shared. Because to, to comment, you need to provide your name.
Okay, this is really just something I forgot to ask about before. It's Barbara Curtis again, Ship Car from the Square. People have talked around this issue, but not directly, some of the earlier questions. I thought that the comprehensive plan had the force of law and that that could be used to counteract the development by right argument. Is that not the case?
I can't go into any specifics that I discussed with the council, so I'm going to go into my, I ironically teach this for the University of Delaware. So ultimately, the comprehensive plan does have the force of law. No development is permitted except in conformance with the comprehensive plan. There are arguments that can be made. We could have a long discussion about the cases and how you read the comprehensive plan and light of the zoning code. So it's not a clean cut victory, one way or the other, on that kind of an argument.
Okay, then, Deb.
I have several points to make. Deborah, Deborah Evolz, 10 Harborview Road. First of all, thank you for having this meeting because I know the intent here is to have a more, you know, increased transparency and access. So, so thank you for that. I also want to say, just as a resident of Lewis and a member of the Planning Commission, thank you to all the people who are here and on Zoom. And I served along with Charlie and others in this room on the subdivision to rewrite chapter 170. I think something that hasn't been discussed yet is that Glenn was also at our meetings. So as we wrote the code, we discussed every point and said, is this defensible? Is this something that's going to be able to hold up? And that was an intent the whole way along. Related to that and answering Mary Ann's question is that we are going to have a tree ordinance subcommittee that has just been, I've been appointed chair of. And it will be getting underway soon and same kind of care will be taken. The, the big question I have, I guess it's for a mayor and council, is now we have a better subdivision, subcommittee. But as a citizen and as a member of the Planning Commission, I am concerned at a trend that I see in the city and in the larger county, which is when developments are denied, when subdivisions, minor or major, are denied. There, there is legal comeback and decisions are sometimes overturned, sometimes not. I know that the way to protect ourselves is to have stronger codes. How can we move along to the, the greater number of development threats in this community are minor subdivisions? And division of existing lots, tearing down and replacement of one house with two. This is what's going to break the camel's back, in my opinion. And how can we move forward with improving our minor subdivision code to help Lewis for the long run?
Why would you say, as you know, the process would have to come through your committee? Public buy-in? And it's, it needs to start there in terms of concepts around what, what are, what are going to be things that prevent the ill effects, as you, as you said, of, of minor subdivisions? The other thing I would add to that, and I, I really wanted to say, I appreciate Justin and John showing up tonight because in my mind, another important aspect of as a community that we need to do is bring back the dialogue that, that in my. Oh, I'm muting myself here? Okay. It's just, you know, I think one, one of the things I want to encourage is a, is a healthy dialogue with our developers and our, our realtors and such. So that we can understand, you know, beyond money, what is their vision and what is, what are they hoping to achieve here? Because they, they also are community members here. So it behooves them, as John said, to, to, to work i- in that same goal. And then hopefully we can use this. And in one way, I wanted to have this as an opportunity for you all to have a chance to address us. But I do also want to move this as a, use this as an opportunity for all of us to move forward, including other relationships that we've got with future developers and landowners.
Can I just add, I think perhaps rather than changing the code as it relates to minor subdivisions, it's really more looking at the zoning and the bulk standards that are required for a lot. Because typically a minor subdivision is if you've got, you know, enough land that you can strike a lot line and still meet the requirements. So, so that you, you can do it. So I think you really need to then look at what, you know, what are your lot dimensions? What, what are your lot area requirements, rather than the sub, the minor subdivision process itself? Because if you've got a 10,000 square foot lot and it's a 5,000 square foot minimum, it's really hard through the subdivision code to do something about that.
So coming back to that, the power to change the zoning code lies solely with, with Mayor and City Council, correct? So.
The, the planning commission is a big part of that. The planning commission can recommend. Right.
And then I just want to kind of address the audience here and the audience on Zoom. As people are here tonight because they're angry and they're upset, come out because you want change. Because I'm thinking back on an issue that wasn't so long ago, and it was the flood plain. There was a lot of pressure from a small section of residents that, you know, are heavily invested in flood plain, in, and in the flood plain regs that were proposed. And there was a lot of pushback and there were changes. And the pushback needs to, for those who want more, more, you know, who want stronger regs, all of you need to be at those meetings too and giving public comment. And it's so important because if everybody in this room would come out and speak for changes, they'd probably go through smoothly. So that's all. And if anybody has input on the tree, on the trees, send it this way, we're hoping to, I'm hoping to seek, you know, some, bring some experts in too. And I've already approached a few people in the community that are recognized experts with trees. So.
And Deborah, your meetings are going to be public meetings.
Yes, absolutely.
And so anyone is, they're open to anyone.
Yep. So, and thank all of you.
Thanks, Deborah. We'll, we'll just take a couple of more questions because we're, again, are, are.
The meter's running.
Yeah. Let's, let's let some others who haven't spoken, yeah, come on in, Rich.
Great. Thank you. Rich Ennis, no relation to my Irish cousin, Dave Ennis. But I'm on the Lewis Planning Commission. I'm also a help direct the National Estuary Programs for EPA. And I'm a member, I'm a trustee of the Nature Conservancy for Delaware and Pennsylvania. Just a couple of comments. First of all, I want to strongly endorse Tom Panetta's observations and kind of a warning to us all that we, we neglect sea level rise and extreme weather events at, to our peril, right here. We are the front lines. And so I'm a very strong supporter of the citizens of Rodney Abno. Many of them are my friends. And after I got appointed to the Planning Commission, thanks to Janelle, I actually got a copy of the code and, and also the, the comp plan and read it. And if you ever have insomnia, it's a great, great cure. But the, one, what occurred to me, what, what was clear to me is that, while it's, you know, it's, it rolls off the tongue to say, well, the comp plan is a, is enforceable, you know, it, you know, it has the force of law. When you read through it, you can drive a truck through the wording in that complaint. It's very good. It's aspirational. It's inspirational. But one of the undertakings that we're doing on the Planning Commission now, it was just mentioned by Deborah, is we're, we're going through the five-year review and then we're going to rewrite the whole thing, starting in just a couple of years from now. We really need to pay attention and write that more tightly and have a code that backs it up. And the only, the only final comment that I'll make is that, and, and this is an admonition to the, to all of us, to the city council in particular. Sussex is really where the game is now. As we said, there's very little developable land left here in Lewis. The county is building right over our aquifer. And, and we seem powerless to, to really stem that, or at least we feel that. And, and the question I have is, I know that there is a, I think it's seven cities along the shore here that, that had banded together. And it goes to earlier comments that were made about, you know, their strength in numbers. So how can Lewis help lead that effort? How can we catalyze real political reform with Denrak, with Sussex County to preserve the community that we love so dearly?
Thanks, Rich.
Hi, I'm Claire Johnson and I, 29 Hornkill Avenue. And my question is, what would happen after this development comes in? And then, because I've seen the flooding in the last couple of years before this development, who do I contact to say, hey, my, I, I'm one of the few people that I do have a basement that, and, and, but I have a, I paid $10,000 to have it, you know, done. But who do I, who do I contact in this, do I call the city? If my, that's my question. If there's problem, we have flooding after the, who do we call?
You do call the city.
You call, but I thought the city is not responsible.
Well, I mean.
Oh, you want to talk through that next? Essentially.
Now I'm going to hear double talk.
I'm not going to, I'm trying not to double talk you, but it is the property owner's responsibility. If there was a failure of the, of the system or something like that, then you certainly would call the city. But ultimately, it's property owners as the, as just like if the, I think we discussed at length, if the stormwater management that's being put in on Fisher's Cove is an. if the stormwater management that's being put in on Fisher's Cove is inoperable, it goes to property owner, which would then be the HOA. It wouldn't be the city's financial responsibility. But the city would enforce sort of its codes if there was some problem downstream.
And I want to thank you all. This is very, since I'm not in the city, there's 12 houses of the Hornkill Avenue that are not, we're in the county.
Well, we'd be interested in getting you off septic, so.
Well, that's another story. It's another time. But thank you for all. It's been a pleasure.
All right. Well, a couple more questions. One from online there.
Patrick McCoy, 108 Rodney Avenue. If Rodney is construction access, will it be rebuilt after construction, but not widened or otherwise modified? Who will pay for this?
Well, the plan is not to widen it. If the, if there's, if they do happen to have to go down there and there's a significant damage, you'd have to put it back to its standard and the city would be responsible for that. Well, I mean, come on up, John. You wanted to say that on the record. Yeah. And that's it. I mean, it's restored to its original, not its original state, but the, at least the state of similar construction, pre-construction. But not, the intention is not to widen or put the swales. Unless you want them. And, you know, again, I know that the, the comment was made by Cal and others that, you know, we, in a, in a perfect world, we, we would have liked to have said everything. And frankly, we said most, I mean, I think we were 95% of what we could, you know, what went on behind there. But I will tell you again, I mentioned this previously is that it was a long process. I think there was also this conception, preconception or this misconception, I should say, that we went in a room and then we came out and it was that. It was a long process. It was a back and forth. There was a, there was a healthy debate amongst us as, as council members. But ultimately, we, we did vote unanimously. So I think to take that away, we, we were all in the same place and we had to do this all without, under the constraints of FOIA. So we had no opportunity prior to those sessions to get together and see what each other are thinking. So that's another difficulty in the paradigm with which we operate is, is this piece of FOIA. So I do appreciate everyone that's come out. One more question we'll take. Okay.
Very quick question. Patrick Daphne, 222 Marina Drive. Would this, will this happen again?
I, I can't predict that.
I don't hear anything other than sort of an acceptance that, well, this is the way things are. Developers come in, it's an act of God, end of story. I just want to know, is that your opinion?
Well, again, we, we have amended code. So that's, that's a one tool in our toolbox. The other, as I said, is more, hopefully a more healthy dialogue and an understanding with future developers. And then there's the other is the appetite for the city and its residents to acquire available land. So that's, other than that, I can't, I can't predict it will happen again. I probably won't be here in 60 years.
Okay.
I'm going to at least get myself to 100 though.
Would have been on wrong.
One more question, Cal. You'll be the last one.
I just wanted to be clear regarding the conference of plan and ordinance. It's important that, that the conference of plan be codified in ordinance in order to be enforceable. The plan in itself is not enforceable, correct?
The plan has to be adopted by ordinance.
Okay. So I appreciate everyone's time. And, you know, I think I speak for myself, but hopefully the others that if, you know, anytime, please reach out. I'm not going to be able to provide you more than we've done here. But any ideas that you've brought forward or that could germinate, building off the backs of others, please feel free to, to, to reach out to us and maintain the communication. We have to, as Pink Floyd said, you got to keep talking. That's it.
Can, can I just bring up, we mentioned earlier the public hearing next Monday about the purchase of land. But there's also a workshop next Tuesday in this room, I believe, right? About the Great Marsh Park Master Plan. And given that the Great Marsh Park is in the same vicinity, it's, you know, I think it's important that you all know that that's going on and that, that, again, that's another opportunity to provide input into kind of how that area looks over the long term.
I'll add that that master plan workshop is next Tuesday, starts at four, from four to seven. And it is here in Raleigh.
Yes, I believe so. Yeah. So there will be a presentation that will be done twice during that window. But for the most part, it is shopping at different stations.
Anne Marie, for the people who want to hear the introduction piece, or is it, they're going to be at the beginning and then halfway through you'll do it again?
I think, okay. Okay. Yes.
Yeah. So the, the last one that we did before the planning commission.
Okay. Yeah, it's interactive.
It's interactive. So it's not coming to the mic and speaking. It's providing your, your comments through the activities at the different stations and also through written comments.
And this is just one of the steps in the process.
Right. This is one of the steps in the process. So this is the early feedback. And then later we will have the plan that, you know, we'll then take public comment on.
All right, folks. Well, do I need a motion to, okay.
No, not at all.
Can I, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion is second. All in favor? We're adjourned.